Hearing Examiner for tonight, the purpose of this hearing. I got it on, just wasn't close enough, I guess. The purpose of this hearing is to allow me to receive evidence and testimony on the matters that are pending. I make a recommendation only to the county commissioners, I do not make the final decision. I will be submitting my, submitting my recommendation to staff within two weeks of this evening's hearing. The application will then be scheduled for deliber- deliber- got mouth problems tonight, good thing I'm not talking after this. Deliberations before the county commissioners. If you wish to give testimony, I need you to fill out one of the sheets in the back, and when you come to the podium, please remember to give me your name and address for the record before you begin your testimony. First, staff will introduce the application, then we will hear from the applicant. After the applicant's testimony, we will then get into the public comment sheets. We will hear from those who are in favor, those who are neutral, and then those who are opposed. And then we'll go and see if there's anybody online that wants to comment. The public not speaking will be read into the record. We will then give the applicant and/or the representative an opportunity for rebuttal of any testimony stated into the record from the public before we close the public hearing. After that point, we will receive no further testimony. The time limits are thirty minutes for applicant's presentation, three minutes for public testimony, and fifteen minutes for applicant rebuttal. I would ask that you direct all of your comments to me and not to the audience. Any questions regarding tonight's proceedings? Okay, looks like you're all skilled at hearings. So our first case this evening is case number MSP two-five dash zero-zero-zero-one.
Good evening for the record, Vlad Finkel with Cootney County Community Development. As you stated, this is a request by JT Holdings LLC for the approval of a thirteen lot major subdivision called Round Mountain Estates First Edition. The subject property is located in the northwest quadrant of Cootney County between Twin Lakes and Spirit Lake on the east side of Highway forty-one and just south of the intersection of Seasons Road and Highway forty-one. The overlay of the plat that you see in the right, on the right side of the screen is due to the fact that the applicant has recently readjusted the subject parcel boundary with adjoining parcels to the east that they also own as well. This has not been updated in the Cootney County Assessor's GIS map, and therefore we make an overlay to make sure that it was clearly visible where the boundaries of the proposed plat are. The subject property here, it's outlined in this area. It is heavily vegetated, the applicant has recently cut in an access road, which I will talk about later in my presentation. The site is relatively flat except for some minor areas which are the cut slopes for the construction of the access road. You can see here's the intersection of Seasons Road to the north, and as you head north, you have Spirit Lake in this area. The property is currently zoned rural with the comprehensive plan designation of country. For the records, for everyone's knowledge, everyone's knowledge, the minimum lot size in the rural zone is five acres. So, this is the layout of the proposed subdivision. All of the lots will gain access from the interior road. None of the lots that have, that are facing Highway forty-one will have a separate access. They will all be gaining access off of the interior road called Gemini. The applicant will also be plating a utility slash well site with its own access for maintenance and upkeep. Here are some areas of cut slope easements where it's relatively steep, and the applicant is proposing some common driveways across the adjoining parcels for the benefit of some of these lots. At this time, it hasn't been determined whether they will be exclusive or non-exclusive. It's important to make that distinction because if they're going to be exclusive, then the applicant is not going to be required to construct them because they're not considered shared infrastructure. But if they're going to be exclusive or non-exclusive, then obviously they're going to have to construct them and have provisions in the CCNRs to maintain them. The newly proposed road, which is currently under construction, will also be privately maintained, but it will be built to the Associated Highway District standards. I believe the applicant is proposing to have it be gated at the entrance. So they will have thirteen lots on approximately seventy acres, sixty-nine point sixty to be exact. Water will be provided by a new private water system in, based on review and approval by the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality. It'll have to comply with the Idaho State Public Water System requirements for bacterial testing and other requirements. The applicant has recently drilled a well on this site, and I believe based on the well drillers' report, it's producing upwards of four hundred gallons per minute. So, because the property is over the aquifer, it does generate more than enough water to provide service to these lots. It far exceeds the minimum requirements of the Land Use and Development Code, which are a minimal five gallons per minute flow for a period of four hours and a minimum of fifteen hundred gallons per day per each lot. So, the newly drilled well will meet that requirement, obviously will be reviewed and approved, the system by DEQ, and will also be signed off by PHD on the face of plat. Individual septic's will serve each lot for purposes of effluent treatment. Here are some pictures of Highway forty-one facing north and south, and here are some pictures of Gemini Lane that, this is the current state of that road. I believe they may have some, maybe a small portion of it has been gravelled, but perhaps not, maybe that's a question for the applicant. But it will need to be meet, it will be required to meet the Associated Highway District standards prior to final preparation, or it will need to be bonded for and then constructed to that level with the bond being released. So during the agency comment period, basically, all the agencies were on board. Really, the comments were very similar to those of other major subdivision requests. Build permit requirements in the future from Building Division, Lakes Highway District requires the road to be constructed to their standards, and they will likely need to enter into a road development agreement. ITD approved an approach permit off of Highway forty-one. Panhandle Health District has their requirements for future septic systems. One of the items I did want to point out is we typically get a lengthy letter from the sheriff's office with concerns about having sufficient funds for their office to operate and having enough officers to provide the necessary service to Cootney County residents. We understand their concerns, and typically they're not opposed to the project, but they do voice some of their budgeting issues. And at this time, we don't have a mechanism in our code, nor do I believe there's anything at state level that would require some sort of financial obligation as impact fees to be funded as part of the approval process. Everything else I pretty much spoke about and seems to be appropriate and consistent with a typical major subdivision request. During the public comment period, we received four comments, one in support and three in opposition with concerns regarding groundwater supply and additional traffic on Highway forty-one. Like to spend a little bit of time talking about the public comments. So, with the groundwater supply being an issue, the groundwater quantity report and the property being over the aquifer, really, we don't see that being problematic just because we haven't had issues arise in the past on projects that are over the aquifer and having a well that produces more than enough water, we just don't see that being an issue. With regards to additional traffic on Highway forty-one, it's true that every subdivision does create additional traffic, and cumulatively it will, over time, reduce level of service, but we don't have any mechanism in place to account for cumulative impact from all the subdivisions. And this has had, this obviously has been brought to our attention by our elected officials that somehow we need to be cognizant of cumulative impact across the county, which I believe with some amendments to the comprehensive plan in the future, hopefully we can address those matters that are currently of a concern to the board as well as the public. Additionally, one of the comments that was, in particular, concerned about the infrastructure improvements being in place, such as the well being drilled as well as the road being constructed prior to preliminary approval or during the review process. It's very uncommon that that happens, but I do want to explain why the department issued a site disturbance permit for the construction of the access road. The access, the site disturbance permit was submitted before the subdivision application was submitted, and it was to provide access to the parent parcel for the subject request, as well as I believe twelve or thirteen adjoining parcels to the east that are under the ownership of the applicant. The county does not have the authority to deny such a request because it's an access road. In this case, it's, it's just coincidental that the access road to the parcels beyond is the access road for the subdivision. So technically, we're not approving anything that is strictly for the subdivision. We are approving something that will benefit the subdivision as well as the parcels to the east. With regards to the well being drilled, anybody can drill a well on their property. So we can't really stop them. Now, in terms of having that be approved through DEQ, PHD, as well as IDWR for water right purposes, obviously that has to come in through the subdivision review and conditions of approval that we are proposing to be imposed for this project to be approved to mitigate impact. So, wanted to explain that position with regards to having the improvements in place to serve the subdivision. Other than that, our analysis is that the proposed density is consistent with the development in the area. We don't, we do not see that being an issue. We find that the applicant can and will be able to comply with the conditions of approval and construct the necessary infrastructure to make this project be feasible. And with that, I stand for any questions that you have for me.
I just have a curiosity question. Is this in Lakeland School District? I think it is.
I, I'm not sure.
And the-
It is, yes, we did solicit comments and they did not respond.
Because for a while you were getting similar letters from them that you're now getting from the sheriff's office. And lately, they haven't.
You know, we did, and then in some other, more later comments, they basically said no concerns. I don't know, at least they did not respond.
Just curious.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And the applicant, Mike Curry?
Hi, Mike Curry, I reside at thirteen seventy-eight West Moselle, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, eight-three-one-five. I won't add a ton to what Vlad has already shared with everybody. He always does a great job with the information. But like Vlad did, I want to respond to one of the comment letters that was received. Like, like most comment letters, or like anybody that lives in this area, the concerns with development, we all have it. It addressed traffic, water, and then, as Vlad stated, the fact that the infrastructure was already underway. I'll just touch on all three of those items. One, first of all, the water. Like Vlad said, it's over the aquifer. We drilled a test well, test well, tested it four hundred and fifty gallons per minute, so we were assured that it was an aquifer well. In addition to that, we have other water systems on the, on, in this, in Cootney County, out on the prairie. And so we've learned that process with IDWR and with DEQ, and we also know to what extent we need to build these water systems. So, this one's actually designed with not only the appurtenances that Vlad has spoke about, but it'll also have a hundred and sixty thousand gallon reservoir up at elevation at the east end of the project. So, not only is that well producing out of the aquifer, DEQ will require that there be some redundancy, which will be an additional well, and then also, we're choosing, while a four hundred and fifty gallon per minute well could provide pressured water to only twenty-five lots, we've learned that the redundancy of a hundred and sixty thousand gallon well is, it's worth, it's worth the effort. Because we can also provide minimum fire flows, two hundred and fifty gallons per minute to fire hydrants. So, that's the water. As far as the traffic is concerned, you know, we, as Vlad stated, we boundary line adjusted the existing thirteen lots, which were from an Idaho plat. We boundary line adjusted those to the east end of the project, and then that's why we have infrastructure underway, was to provide access to those thirteen lots on the east side of the project. And in doing so, we had to apply for a Highway forty-one encroachment permit with ITD. During their review process, they said that we would need to mitigate the traffic, hence the comment in the, in the comment letter about additional traffic in that area based on our subdivision, but they also said that we would mitigate against that additional traffic with a turn lane. So our plans for the roads have been reviewed by Idaho Transportation Department, Lakes Highway District, and Idaho Transportation Department reviewed and approved the approach, and with the condition that we build a right-hand deceleration turn lane on Highway forty-one. And those plans have also been seen by ITD and also been approved. So again, to answer the question in the comment letter, we've mitigated that additional, additional traffic that we're bringing to the area with the turn lanes. As far as the construction being underway, again, I'll just touch bases on it. You know, we had thirteen lots here. We boundary line adjusted those to the east, and we needed to provide a road, and we wanted to provide water. Regardless of whether or not this parcel was to be subdivided, we were going to market those lots, and in doing so, it needed to provide them with water and access. And then lastly, septic, we've been through the process with Panhandle Health District, and because this is over the aquifer, there's no test holes required, and they're not, and they're not required until actual building permit time. So, and then I'll stand for any questions if you have any.
I don't, it's a beautiful piece of property.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. We have no public comment sheets, do we have anyone?
No.
Nope. Okay, anybody have anything further to say on this case? Then that concludes our hearing on case number MSP two-five dash zero-zero-zero-one, thank you. And we will move on to case number CUP two-five dash zero-zero-zero-nine.
Good evening, Madam Hearing Examiner. For the record, Justice Max George, planner with Cootney County Community Development. And the project that we have, CUP twenty-five zero-zero-zero-nine, is a request by the Kellogg Joint School District to establish an existing school as a conforming use. And I'll get into why we are requiring a CUP and why we actually care about getting this permitted. So, it's getting started, the general vicinity, it's, the location of the school is west of Cataldo, just northeast of State Highway three, and just north of Interstate ninety, east of Coeur d'Alene. So the request is to establish an existing school that has been there for quite some decades as a conforming use. And the trigger for this requirement was the desire to add portable classroom structures, not to expand the student population, but to expand the different classes that they can offer at the school. So, the first question that we need to ask is, when was this school established? What makes it non-conforming? So, sifting through various different records, sometimes the paper trail can be difficult to track when something is this old. But the first document that, the oldest document that we see in our records is a warranty deed from nineteen forty, where this property in nineteen forty was owned by a school district. The shown press gives an overview of the history of the building being constructed in the nineteen fifties with improvements in the nineteen seventies. Now, sort of corroborating that information with assessor's records, there is a, and this is in the file, there is assessor's records labeled Real Property Evaluation Summary for a school district with some dates noted in nineteen sixty-eight and nineteen seventy-one. It doesn't really show any more information than that, but it indicates that there was something being evaluated at that time. Nineteen eighty-two is when the assessor's definitively indicates there is a schoolhouse. So all to say, we have more than sufficient information to determine it to be non-conforming. The code, the current code requires a CUP for the agricultural zone, this is the agricultural zone. The CUP was first required in, well nineteen seventy-six, it allowed the schoolhouse should certain conditions be met, one of them being five acre piece of property, having two hundred feet of continuous frontage, and being two hundred feet from other dwellings. It met that, so it didn't, it was allowed by right in nineteen seventy-six. And then, from what I could find in our zoning ordinance, nineteen ninety-eight was the first time a CUP was required for the agricultural zone. There are, there's also playgrounds on site, those are currently allowed as a primary use. And then furthermore, the code, today's code states to the effect that "non-conforming use of a structured land shall not be enlarged or expanded beyond that which lawfully existed on the effective date of today's title or previously adopted applicable ordinances." The desire to add portable classrooms, staff consider this to be an increase in square footage, which is considered an expansion, though the mere intensification of a use may not always constitute an expansion. To wrap this up, "non-conforming use" is not used as a justification for expansion of other uses other than what has primarily been historically allowed in the past. All to say, CUP is required. This is the site plan. What we can see on the northwest of the schoolhouse loop road is the, what I'm referring to is a schoolhouse. There, this is interesting in that there is parking both in the rear of the school, but also in the public roadway. This roadway is closed during school hours. And the desire is to have this two-classroom portable on the other side of the road. No restroom facilities or plumbing is proposed, just the classroom space. And then you can also see there's other characteristics of the site, such as wetlands. But having done a site visit, and also what the site plan is showing, there is no risk of development in these wetlands based on this proposal. This is an enlarged view. You can see the classroom will be forty feet from the edge of the public right-of-way, which is required as a performance standard for schools in the CUP, CUP section of the school. And this is a closer-in-view. Parking in the public road will be utilized to meet the parking standard, as well as a minimum of two accessible parking spaces. The zoning is agricultural. And then there are setbacks shown for structures, even though the school performance standard requires forty feet for these portable structures. This is an aerial view, you can see again the school on the right side, and then the field on the left where the portable will be. This is the schoolhouse today. Now, around about here is where the portable structure is proposed to be placed, where there's some jungle bars. And essentially, the students to access the main schoolhouse, restroom facilities, they would have to cross there. This photo is showing straight on approximately where the portables would be. The portables you can kind of see on the left, that's, they're there temporarily, within the public right-of-way, outside of our jurisdiction. This is another view of that same spot. This is generally where students would likely enter the school from the portables. They could also go through the front over there. The, I mentioned that the road is closed during school hours, so the sign says seven to three P.M. It is a loop, so all neighbors do, and this was one of the concerns mentioned by multiple neighbors. All the comments received were from those that live on Schoolhouse Loop. And one of their concerns is the fact that this road is closed during school hours. This has not impeded any access to the other main public road. It is a loop, so it connects on both ends. And Worley, excuse me, East Side Highway District confirmed and reaffirmed that the road can remain closed and that it is in compliance with their requirements. This is just a photo of the fields across from the school. An overview of the public agencies. IDWR, Idaho Department of Water Resources, stated that the, they're compliant- stated that they're compliant and they're vested under water rights from, I believe it was 1970s, and that they need to just continue complying with those conditions set in place during that time. The Idaho Department of Environmental Quality, they had concerns because there had, some years back, been some contamination with the well. And so they had a facility plan to bring the well, which is a public water system, up to standards with their requirements. The capacity, the Kellogg School District currently allows a maximum capacity, even before this proposal, of 130 students. That's not changing. The issue was that the approved capacity by DEQ was, I believe, 97 individuals total. And so clearly, this is exceeded. Now, DEQ did state, after back and forth with them, that they have accepted the Kellogg School's commitment for completing the required facility plan by March 30th, 2027, for Canyon Elementary School's public drinking water system. This expands our previous comments that those requirements will be met by then and the subject project can move forward while the district works with their consultant engineer. So I, following receipt of this comment, I reached out to Anna Moody, the drinking water supervisor with DEQ, to clarify that they are, we are able to move forward with this proposal that it is still safe for students to be attending. They did verify that and that they don't need any follow-up from us, that the standard will be met, that they have the ability to to follow this through without our need for further conditions. Panhandle Health District, they have jurisdiction over the Septic system. They also approved DEQ, their comment pertaining to the Septic system, really, they were just deferring to PHD. Should PHD have any concerns, then DEQ could step in. PHD confirms that they didn't need any follow-up from DEQ, that it was in fact compliant. It's within, so the school's within the instrumental control panel. I believe I stated that correct. Essentially, there are potentially contaminated soils in the area. PHD Kellogg approved the project, just stating that a permit would be required for site disturbance. Eastside Highway District confirmed that the road closure was in place since 1999 during school hours and approved of the request. They also approved of parking in their right-of-way. Cooney County Building Division, their main concern was accessibility for students going from the portable to the main schoolhouse, especially given that there's no restroom facilities in the portables. In my site visit, I did have the Building Division join to get eyes on the ground. Nothing much was stated during that site visit, but the requirements were made clear to the applicant that they will just have to comply with those building code standards. Idaho Department of Education is not really a regulating, is not a regulating agency for the land use aspect of the school, so they just impose some general requirements for public schools based off Idaho State statutes that don't really, aren't really germane to this request, but they're referenced regardless. And then the Fire District, the Sheriff Anna Vista approved of the request. So at the time of my staff report, there were two comments. Since then, there has been one additional public comment not in support of the request that I would like to enter into the record.
Read it in the record as HE 2002.
So the public comments, again, two were not in support of the request, one was. All the commenters' addresses on Schoolhouse Loop. The main concerns were school maintenance, visual impact of the portable building, student accessibility between the portables and main schoolhouse, and road closure during school hours. Again, Eastside Highway District confirmed that the road can remain closed. The Building Division does have accessibility requirements between the main schoolhouse. This is a way, this proposal is to add classrooms that the school currently does not have the capacity to. In speaking with the applicant prior, there is a possibility that the school in the future could have a permanent, more permanent expansion of the school to accommodate those classrooms and that this could be a temporary solution, though that's not in the narrative at this time. And that's something that could be discussed with the applicant. School maintenance, that's not really our, within our jurisdiction. That's a concern that will have to be addressed with the school district. Overall, staff believe that findings have been met and we can recommend approval of the request. There will be a landscaping plan. A lot of the areas will remain preserved for natural vegetation. We will require two native trees to be planted in front of the portables, which is about proportional to the request. And there will be 30 parking spaces at minimum, as required by code, too, which are required to be ADA compliant. And the proposal does comply with all other agency requirements. Here's the site plan, and I stand for any questions that you may have.
I don't have any at the moment. Thank you, Justice.
Thanks.
All right. I have Corey Trapp.
Good evening. Corey Trapp, LTA Architects, representing the applicant, Kellogg School District, 8677 North Wayne Drive, Hayden, Idaho. So just to add and clarify maybe a few more things that Justice indicated. The school was first occupied in 1952, 53. The portion on the right was a four-classroom building. In the 70s, the GM and some additional classrooms were built on the west side of the building. The portables, the portable is currently on-site, but it is not in the final location. It's stored off onto the east until we get approval. They were able to get a portable from the Coeur d'Alene School District. They were getting rid of four or five portables and Kellogg was able to get a couple of them. They had to move them off-site, off this Coeur d'Alene School District site before the start of school started. So that's why it's up on the site, but we're waiting for approval so we can put it in the final location. It's stored off onto the far west side of the site right now. It's off the street. It's not where it was shown in the pictures at this time. They do have a cap of 130 students. The portable is intended to be a science classroom and a music classroom. Canyon Elementary is a magnet school for the Kellogg School District and they want to have a dedicated science classroom for all the different classes to use for that function. There are plans in the future to, the ultimate goal would be to build a permanent classroom off, two permanent classrooms off the back of the building, and then the portable would go away at that time. As of course, with any school project, it all depends on funding and funding sources. So we do have a ramp shown for handicap accessibility. We're going to put a concrete sidewalk over and then we are going to stripe across the street to the access to the school, so there's a demarked location for the students to walk. When the road is closed, they use orange cones. It's not a permanent gate or anything like that. So emergency vehicles can easily get through if they had to, in case of any kind of, those kind of issues. Welch Comer is currently working on their water plan, mitigation plan. They're in the process of doing that right now and getting that started. That's pretty much it. So would open it up to any questions you might have.
I hope those two that were delivered to your property were the best of the five.
They were. They're, all of them were 30 years old, but we did get, get good ones.
Is there funding as well to improve them? Because they are a wreck.
I believe once they're set, they're gonna, Aaron, you're gonna probably, they'll definitely probably repaint them and make them look nicer.
But I mean, interior.
They're just, they're just classroom spaces, so there's no bathrooms inside them, of course.
Yeah. But, and was it considered to put those classrooms, like, behind the building? Where you mentioned you might have an expansion.
Portables, we can't, there's not access to get the portables to the back of the building. There's not enough room to get them there right now. Yeah. If there was, that's where we would have put them.
My, one of my best friends was the principal of this school over 30 years ago. And she had some interesting stories to tell about it. That's all I have for you right now. Thanks. And Aaron Miller is in favor and may wish to speak. No?
I'm Aaron Miller, address 305 Main Street, Pinehurst. And I just want to clarify on the fixing up of the portable. So we have one at Pinehurst, because we got two. And we are doing, redoing the interior, putting new carpet in there, repairing the walls, painting them. And as funding occurs, we'll definitely try to make it look as nice as possible on the outside.
Thanks. Paul? I'm going to make a mess of your name. Thank you. You're opposed and you may wish to speak.
Yes. I'm very opposed to it. There's no pictures of these buildings, but they're, they're old trader houses. That's what they are. They're 40-year-old trader houses and they're unsightly. No one told anybody that lives here on Schoolhouse Loop that they were going to set this stuff up. We wouldn't have known about it, except they just brought them in. And there would have been, if it wasn't for Cooney County, we wouldn't have known nothing about it. They would have just done it. It would have just been set up. So the school district is, I can't believe that they're closing the road. And, and this whole situation has just really made me angry and made a lot of people on Schoolhouse Loop angry, that they don't let anybody know what they're doing. And if they would just let people know what they're doing, they're not talking to anyone. They're just doing this stuff. And to, and we, none of us believe that they're going to stop at 130 kids. They're going to keep going. There's more people moving into Valley all the time and they're just going to keep adding kids. And, and I've talked to the, to the Highway District. They told me that the school district has no authority to close that road. And I don't know how you guys are getting the information that you do have authority to close the road. What's that?
Please address me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Well, I'm new at this stuff.
That's okay.
And I have a hard time hearing almost anything anybody was saying. I'm hard of hearing and I don't, I don't think this microphone's doing much, but anyway, I'm opposed to it and, and I just think it's a really bad idea. I don't, I don't like the school, I don't like the road closure. I don't like the kids darting back and forth across the roads. It's, it's, are they going to have bathrooms in those things?
I think he said no, that the bathrooms would still be in the existing schoolhouse.
Often than they already are. I just, I think it's just a really bad idea and very poor planning. And I don't know, why don't they just, I don't know. I don't understand it. But I wish they'd communicate more with the community when they're trying to set things up. And thank you.
Thank you for being here. That's all of the comment sheets I have. Do we have anybody over there? No? Okay, rebuttal?
Thanks. We did approach the county and found out that when we went to forget a building permit, that's when we discovered that we needed the condition use permit. The school had been there for so long, we didn't know that it didn't have one. So that's what actually triggered, and then we've stopped. The only thing that's happened is we had to move the portable up there because we had to get it out of the Coeur d'Alene School District. But we have stopped on any other progress on it until we've gone through the condition use permit process and, and also getting a building permit to actually put it there and do the improvements. The school is also limited to 130 students. Some of that's by the water, the well size and the drain field size. But also, because it's a rural school, if they exceed 130 students, they're going to, the school would get less funding from the state. So there's no incentive for them to go over it. Their incentive is for them to keep it under 130 students. So they maximize the funding they get for the state for that.
So they add another elementary school somewhere in order to?
Yeah, add on to the other schools or do some, that's why the, one of the other portables went to Pinehurst is so they could add capacity at that school and not at this one.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else to add? Then that concludes our hearing this evening on CUP 25-0009. Moving right along, our next case is MSP 25-0002.
For the record, Justice McGeorge with Cooney County. And yeah, so this is a major subdivision, MSP 25-0002, called Lone Fur Ranch, a request by JW LA Properties LLC. And this request is for an 11-lot subdivision. And it's located in, between the city of Athol and the unincorporated community of Bayview. It's about just over three miles west, east of Athol and under four miles west of Bayview, pretty close to Faragut State Park. As you can see here, located along East Highway 54, north of the general Coeur d'Alene area. Here's an aerial view of the property. You can see that there's a lot of existing structures. There has been a demolition permit submitted to demolish all of them. There was one unpermitted structure and that has already been demolished. So as of now, it's compliant. However, they will, to construct the right-of-way, need to follow through with the demo equipment. The zone is rural. It's a minimum of five-acre lot sizes. And the comprehensive plan is suburban, which allows for subdivision. And if you, if I had taken a bigger aerial, the areas are all pretty much rural and suburban around it. Here is the conceptual plan. As you can see, there's 11 lots, all over five acres. They do plan, so this is, and I'm not sure if I'm seeing the road right, Llewellyn Creek Road. It's going to be an extension of Llewellyn Creek from the south, crossing East Highway 54. It's going to remain as an easement, but it will be public, dedicated to Lakes Highway District. It's a cul-de-sac. And a general overview is they're proposing individual wells, individual Septic system. And there is an existing well and lot, I believe it's proposed lot two, that recently had a flow test of 30 gallons per minute. The groundwater quantity report that was submitted met all of our required findings. And looking at the site, taking a tour, we can see, this is where the existing roadway is that will exist no longer once the new associated highway district standard road comes in. The whole property is flat, looks like this, with a lot of young trees, natural grasses, as well as some mature trees, such as this large one here, which the plat is named after. This is actually on Llewellyn Creek Road. South, looking north, the property is here. This photo was This photo was provided by the applicant, and the approach will be, will align with existing approach, and then it'll zigzag back and remain on the property line. An overview of the public agencies, some ones to mention, Idaho Department of Fishing Game will require, their requirements to be integrated into, either on the face of plat as CCNRs or just recorded separately as CCNRs. Idaho Department of Lands will require forest practice acts to be followed. Idaho Department of Water Resources approved the request stating that there are exemptions to the need for a water right should water usage be below a certain threshold. DEQ is requiring desk control and the development of the site. Lake's Highway District, again, is okay with the road being dedicated as an easement, and they've approved the project. IDT, Idaho Transportation Department, granted an approach permit. The Fire District, viewing the conceptual plan, confirmed that the road will meet their standards. And similar to the major subdivision that Vlad presented, the Cootenay County Sheriff provided general concerns. They didn't approve or deny the project. I believe I had seen this letter before for other projects in the past. And Lakeland School District did not comment, and to kind of reiterate what you mentioned earlier, they haven't been commenting on the latest projects that I've reviewed. Surprisingly, no public comments were received for this subdivision. I did get a phone call from a neighbor just for a general question, and I did confirm the public comment did go out, but no comments were received. Overall, staff analysis finds the proposal compatible with the area. The lot size will essentially be infill to be compatible or consistent with the surrounding lots in the area, and all public agencies' requirements can be met. And the applicant will be responsible for, again, constructing the road. That is really the only aspect of this that's considered shared infrastructure or bond before the recreation of the project. Here's the conceptual plan, and I stand for any questions.
I don't really have any. I was out there on Monday, and your sign was down, and I tried desperately, probably 30 different locations, to get that thing back in the ground. That is hard ground.
It was there, but it wasn't, it was facedown?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's unfortunate.
But, that's all.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we have Derek Huff.
Good evening, Ms. Woodard. Jeremy Turzuli. I'm a land use consultant in collaboration with Olson Engineering. Derek Huff is the engineer of record.
Okay.
And one of the principals at Olson Engineering. But again, I'm Jeremy, and I will be presenting tonight.
Hey, thanks, Sutter.
Thank you. As always, staff does a great job, so a lot of this is going to be redundant. I'll move fairly quickly. And then, like I said, Derek is here if you have any technical questions for the engineering. So, Cootenay County Code, it kind of darts around and has a lot of different review criteria. I try to summarize it in my presentation, and it kind of comes down to these, these major points here. Does the application comply with the Cootenay County Code regarding major subdivisions? And then there's a bunch of other, like I said, it kind of darts around a bit and asks for relevant sections of the code. The application was deemed complete by staff. All the items required as part of a preliminary plat approval were deemed complete and submitted by the county and county staff, and the application is in compliance with all of the relevant sections of Cootenay County Code. In short, county staff is really good at bird dogging this, and we don't get to this point if the application wasn't deemed complete. Does the proposed subdivision plan, not the application, but the actual subdivision, comply with, or is it capable at time of final plat complying with county code? So again, the staff report goes over all of this, that it is rurally zoned, which does allow for subdivision. All of our lots are five-plus acres. We have legal and approved access from a public right-of-way. That's off of Highway 54. That encroachment permit is in place, that the subdivision aligns with relevant sections of the comprehensive plan, and there was a comprehensive plan note in the staff report. And again, staff has reviewed and recommends approval of the subdivision after all of those relevant items have been addressed. Additional review criteria. Can the project comply with requirements of all agencies having jurisdiction? Once again, staff report is very comprehensive. We've solicited all those comments from all the different agencies. Comments that are relevant and are staff-recommended conditions of approval can be incorporated into the CCNRs. The Highway District design standards have been met. Transportation Department, ITD, they've approved the intersection location. Panhandle Health District, they will add additional review as we get septic approval as well as stormwater remediation, placement of dry wells, those types of things, all things that's the engineer of record, county staff and Panhandle Health District will work through. I think Vlad pointed it out in the previous major subdivision that Sheriff's Department has been offering that letter, and it's not just the county, it's jurisdictions all around the county that I work in. We feel that 11 homes, five-plus acre lots in this area should have very little to no impact on the sheriff's ability to provide protection up there, emergency services, those types of things, and those will be mitigated through the increased property tax when homes are built and those types of things. And then with regard to, there was a lengthy comment in there about wildlife habitat, and there's a slide, little bit, a few more slides where you'll see that we're kind of with the neighborhood context here. Large homes on large lots in a parent parcel that's mostly been grubbed and cleared and adjacent to Highway 54. We don't think it will have a whole lot of impact on the wildlife in the area. In addition, if you move east and northeast, there are literally millions of acres of state and federal land, timberland that exists there, and that's probably more suitable for the wildlife habitat. So although we do respect that comment, we feel like this actual proposal will have minimal impact on the wildlife in the area. As far as IDWR's comments, we kind of caught this late, and I just wanted to make it a matter of public record because there seems to be a bit of a contradiction from the comment that was received versus what is posted on IDWR's website. But then when you further move through IDWR's website, the document itself seems to contradict itself, and this is new legislation in 2025, so I know we're all trying to figure out what it means, and this next slide goes over it. I've sort of highlighted what I think are the relevant areas. So up above is the comment that was received on September 4th from an IDWR rep, an expert with IDWR, that the new legislation sort of talks about what sourcing your own water for domestic purposes are. And it says that it is intended for use, or it is for in-home use without filing any additional water right, and that that use procludes any irrigation, landscaping, et cetera, outside of the home. Our analysis says, well, does that mean you can't have a hose bib outside the home and drag a hose around and water your yard? So Derek and I, and Derek has a lot of expertise in larger water systems, so we kind of went over this, and then we went to IDWR's website. And in their definitions, they say domestic purposes, and I've highlighted the relevant area, including irrigation of up to one-half acre of land, so long as the total usage of that private well does not exceed 13,000 gallons per day. So that was where we felt there was a bit of a contradiction. We're not pushing back on anything. I just know that if you decide to recommend approval, and the county commissioners do go ahead and approve this, a lot of times that reasoned decision, a lot of this is just copied and pasted and moved over, and rather than have something that we need to unravel downstream, we just want it out in the open, and we'll work with Justice and the Planning Department to get an amended comment from IDWR before we actually put that in the reasoned decision. Does that make sense?
Yep.
That's why I'm bringing it up now. We want to dig into it a little bit more because, like I said, it's legislation passed in 2025, and we just don't want to have to unravel something downstream. Additional review criteria, again, speaking about adequate open space for recreation, wildlife, and timber production. These five-acre lots are going to have some of the least impact to wildlife, and a lot of the open space will be on these lots. Farragut State Park and the lake are very nearby. There's a lot of recreation opportunity for that, and there is a ton of timberland out there. This subdivision and any traffic impacts will be so minimal, it's not going to affect any of the timber industry in this area. Regarding mitigation of any environmental, social, and economic impacts, all of the environmental agencies have had an opportunity to comment. We have reviewed those comments. We'll be incorporating, like I said, any of those relevant comments into the CCNRs. The developer is going to construct any of the internal infrastructure at his cost. The developer will be required to pay any additional impact fees that's, will be put on the project, and there will be increased tax revenue from the finished homes on site. And then finally, does this proposal represent what would be considered orderly development? This is that zoomed-out shot that Justice was referring to, and as you can see, everything except for about two or three parcels in that yellowed area represent five and 10-acre lots with single-family dwellings on them. So this is definitionally orderly development and contiguous and uniform with what's around it. And with that, we respectfully request a recommendation of approval, and I stand for any questions.
I don't believe I have any.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's any rebuttal, I will see you then. If not, it's nice to see you again.
The only, I have Derek Huff.
Do you have any questions?
Okay. And I have no other comment sheets. Do we have any? Nope. Anybody have anything to add or say? With regard to the neighboring area, I think I heard all the cases on Walking Horse Ranch over the last, maybe, two years, seems like. I always love an opportunity to go back out in the same area and see what I learned before. But you're right, it's very similarly developed.
They do a good job.
Yeah, yeah.
One thing I wanted to point out, and you were...
I know you were asking why Lakeland hasn't commented a lot lately, so I am a member of the Lakeland School District. I have three kids in the, well, had three kids, two recent graduates.
Congratulations.
Valedictorian, salutatorian, no big deal, but they've been really busy with getting the levy and all that sort of stuff. And then also in talking with some of the board members, they feel that some of these five-acre subdivisions kind of represent move-up retiree buyers, out-of-state buyers, and they don't think it really is going to have a whole lot of impact on the school. I think those two things have created sort of, them to sort of step back on commenting on these things.
Yeah.
That's my read of the situation.
Okay.
Anecdotally, I just thought maybe that might be helpful for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, then that concludes our hearing this evening on case number MSP 25-0002, and our agenda for tonight is complete. Thank you.